Zero supplemental evidence at our school, any of our schools. Fast forward 20 years, there's been a philosophical shift in America. Away from production in your forest and to conservation. As a result, we've lost about 700 kids in our school system in that combined area. That 700 kids probably represents 200 to 250 full-time jobs with church in the logging industry, or as ancillary businesses to the logging industry. We have 85% of the land in Idaho County is federally owned. These are for those of you who didn't get them. The forest in Idaho County is not taxable. So every county is given a tax base, a production base of trees and minerals and land for grazing and land for farming. And when you erode that base, you end up one with less taxes to pay for schools and roads and bridges and teachers and police, and two, you end up with fewer jobs. And then the demographics of the area change because you don't have the jobs. The demographics have changed. You can see the impact of these massive federal lands. Not a bad thing, it's not a good thing. I'm just telling you it's a fact, philosophically, there's been a change. So when I was elected and Skip was elected, Skip Grant was elected chairman of the Idaho County Commission, your Idaho County Commission, this was on the table, the Locksaw Land Exchange, 40,000 acres. The United States Forest Service wants to own this 40,000 acres. They wanted to for a long time. It's the head of the Locksaw. They think it's very important to the management of that area. And the exchange that they were talking about at the time was something like that, 40,000 acres for other acres here in Clearwater, in Lakeview, in many different counties. But nowhere near the 40,000 acres that would be stripped out of Idaho County's tax base and production base. And as the thing morphed, the idea was environmental groups and ranchers and hunters and fishermen said, "We don't want this piece or that piece or this piece." And we got down to about 4,000 acres. So what it looked like to Idaho County was we were going to lose 40,000 acres of private ground that produces things in exchange for 4,000 private acres. And that loss was 36,000 private acres. And we said, "This is an untenable situation. You can't continue to take our ground, America, without paying for it. If you want it, great, but there's an economic responsibility associated with that ground." And it has to do with your ability through us to provide police and schools and roads and bridges. There has to be a tax base, there has to be a production base. You can't just take it out of the... Here, we'll take another 40,000 acres. But it was an interesting idea and it didn't really get much traction for a while. We yelled and screamed and said, "No, no, no." And the thing continued to go forward at glacial speed, which is what the Forest Service does. It goes through the public process that we all get to be involved in. So finally, we said, "We have to be able to tell the American people what that chunk of land is worth in jobs and taxes." So we did. We hired, on your behalf, we hired a professor at the University of Idaho, an economics professor, third party, unassociated. And we said, "Could you please tell us what this 40,000 acres is worth in jobs and taxes and production?" And he said, "Sure." It took about six months. You have it in front of you, and I've given you the executive summary. And basically, what he said was, "This 40,000 acres represents 128 jobs in Idaho County in perpetuity." And he said, "It represents $8 million in economic activity in Idaho County in perpetuity." The rest of it, to me, is less important than that. Those are enormous numbers, 128 jobs in Idaho County. How do you do that? Just pull those out of the account. So we gave this to the US Forest Service and said, "There is the cost associated with this deal you're doing. You can't just take our production base. We lost 85% of it, and you can't take another 40,000 acres." That 40,000 acres, by the way, is 25% of our private timberland in Idaho County. So we talked to some of the mills here who said, "If you take out 25% of our forest base," because the federal forest doesn't really produce any timber anymore, produces some, but it used to do 100 million more feet of mine, it's first, now it's down to somewhere between 7 and 10. The mills here count on private ground. If you take 25% of the private forest ground totally out of production forever, one of our mills is in trouble, maybe. We don't need that either. So we said, "No, you can't do this." And we amped it up into the highest offices we could find, and we said, "We are totally against this. Period. This is a lot of money. You want to capitalize $8 million, it's an $80 million price tag. If you pay the county $80 million and put it in some trust fund to educate kids and plow roads and provide police, and then you can have the 40,000 acres, and then you can do your deal." But you can't just take our land. In the course of that, it continued. And so we said, "What if, if you have to do this, if this is the most important piece of land in all of your jurisdiction, if you have to do this and you're going to do this over us, then make all of the exchange happen in Idaho County acre for acre, so that we don't lose any production base or pay us." Which is where we are today. The federal government had, the US Forest Service had seven options, so they did an environmental impact statement, and they did all of their due diligence on the 40,000 acres at the Locksaw that they would like. That has been logged. It's still beautiful now. They had seven options. They sent out to everybody, and you all probably got that, probably six months ago or a month ago, they said, "Here's seven options, pick one." The Idaho County Commission said, "We pick A, which was no action. Don't take our production base." And let me tell you how it is, the Locksaw is, you can't just take that from us. But if you have to, do the exchange in Idaho County. And they said, "We might look at that." So we got ahold of some foresters and we said, "This is sort of the last ditch effort for us. We need to come up with some acreage, acre for acre. We're not interested in a 39,000 acre exchange for 10,000 acres." Because again, then you lose 30,000 acres of production. We said, "We want 39,000, which is the number, 39,006 or something. I rounded to 40 because it's easy. You take 40,000 from us and give us 10, doesn't work. If you're going to take 40, trade 40. Trade 40,000 of the acres you already own. Trade 1.5% of the acres you already own." Federal government owns 40,000 acres in Idaho County. This is not the issue. So we put up some docs, and we're not for it, we just put up some docs. Skip and the US Forest Service. I actually don't know who all was involved with the selection, throwing this out, throwing that out, putting this in, suggesting that, suggesting this. I know Western Pacific Timber was. They are the owners currently of the 40,000 acres. I know the Forest Service was. They are currently the owners of the National Forest. Anyway, there was some give and take over a period of months, and they came up with a list that you have now seen. And it is not a done deal either. So right now, in my mind, there are seven alternatives. What we said was, none of them worked. But they said, "We would be happy to look at this other thing you're talking about. If you don't want to lose any acres, then let's look at it." And they are. So we have the opportunity to come up with some ideas, save our production base, save our tax base. One of the things is the taxes on Western Pacific ground, for starters, are a hundred grand a year. So I have said to the US Forest Service before, and we have the commission asked, "Which two teachers would you like us to fire?" And they say, "Who? What do you mean, fire teachers? You can't fire teachers." We said, "Well, if you take 100,000 out of our tax base, that's two teacher salaries. How do you expect us to pay for those two teachers?" The thought hadn't really been put out there. And it's a dramatic thought, we're not going to fire any teachers, but it's the idea. 100,000 bucks leave, that's no longer taxable, it becomes the US Forest Service land, in perpetuity. So where we are today is there's about 10,000 more acres, I'm told, and I am not the expert on this. The person who, for the county commission, has been working on this is Skip Grant. What we do as a commission, together we move forward on your behalf, but individual things. I'll get involved in something, drag it down and do it. And Jim will get involved in something and drag it down and do it. And Skip will get interested in something and drag it down and do it. And we all keep each other informed, but there are primary people on each issue. This is Skip's issue. There are 10,000 extra acres that are currently out there. I know, we know, all of us, know that there are lots of concerns, like, will we still get a hunt on this ground? Are they going to come in and clear cut? Or is it all going to be fenced off and subdivided into one acre plots? What I have suggested to some, and have asked some of you who called, I said, "This isn't a done deal. This is just an idea right now. It's an idea that we are trying to let the forest know, you can't take our production base." And in the middle of this deal, if you've got concerns and you want the right to hunt that ground forever, let's say that. If you don't want it clear cut, let's say that. Let's tell the forest officially, "We'd like you to put an encumbrance on the deed before you trade it to Western Pacific Timber, let's say you have the right to hunt it, fish it, pick berries, pick mushrooms, and you will only log it selectively." That will reduce the value of the land to Western Pacific Timber. But we're talking about an exchange, something that we could, that we as a citizenry can stop this glacial grinding of our production base. When you look at the vacancies up and down, means you pick a city, any one of our cities, they all have vacancies. Well, they didn't 20 years ago. There wasn't a school levy in any of our schools 20 years ago. The school levy just to Greensville right now is $2 million a year. Big deal. So what we're trying to do is protect what jobs we have in this county today and the production base. And the thing that we're talking about now isn't a done deal. It's in some stage of figuring out if this land works or it doesn't, and so we have the county commission. I appreciate all of you being here. And then we're here to answer any questions you have. I'm going to see Western Pacific in the back of the room. Pat?
Some of the properties joining the Forest Service which have water rights on the Forest Service.
Those, if there is water right, common sense says that water right would continue, and the forest would encumber that land with that water right legally. And your water right should be unaffected.
What about the line that runs up to the creek? When you run your water lines up to creek for irrigation? We have irrigation rights too.
So that's one of those things we need to say, we have irrigation rights. It's important to my watering operation. Encumber that land before it's flooded.
And that's how the water coming to our property is from our spring and to the house and probably from the creek, the water.
Perfect thought. I think, you know, rather than us just say, "We don't want this deal," say, "Okay, we need to maintain that water right, period." I bought that ground with the idea that I had water.
It's been used for several years.
I can comment a little bit generally. Andy with Western Pacific Timber, we're in the exchange business. We did a huge land exchange in the state of Washington, largest in the history of the state of Washington. We traded 80,000 acres of land that we owned and traded to the state of Washington for about 20,000 acres. And to answer your question about water rights and existing encumbrances on land that potentially someone would pick up on an exchange, that entity, or in our case, if it were to go that far, we would have to take subject to those existing water rights.
And it would be in ruin.
Yes. And what you need to do, if there are other questions like that, concerns, specific concerns, as I understand, there's a process, you know, this is just kind of starting the dialogue.
Right.
And what I understand, at some point, there'll be a supplemental draft environmental impact statement that will be issued, that the Forest Service would include this new Idaho County alternative. And that at that point, then the public would have 45 days minimum to comment on that.
All right, so let me step in right there. So it today is not an official alternative, but if it becomes one, then we will all have the opportunity.
Can I just come there and ask you one question? If this is a commercial land grab out of our national forest, does this take precedence over all national forests in the United States? Any corporate, corporation step up and take what they want?
And I don't know that, sir. If you could...
If you take one acre, if you take one acre, it's a start.
That's right.
This affects the whole national forest of the United States. Oh.
I'd say, Andy, you finish off, and then we're going to...
Oh, I just, as I understand, this is just the, I mean, we're still analyzing this proposal from our side, may or may not work. The Forest Service will have to do a comprehensive analysis on this alternative. They may or may not like it. So this is just the start in the process. And once the supplemental environmental impact statement's issued, there'll be another comment, there'll be a comment period where the comments will be taken into record. You have specific concerns, then those need to be brought up there as well as here. Now, as I understand, I mean, we only have about an hour today. I'm on my way up to Moscow to meet with my family. My wife's from Troy area, and we're going up to the big game tomorrow. But I'll only be around for about an hour. But we're going to be back October 13th, I believe. We'll publish it, and we'll have a general informational meeting, Western Pacific Timber, on the 13th from like 3:00 to 8:00 o'clock. And we'll publish that. So that would be another opportunity to meet, you know, to meet with us about the exchange and specific questions. I know there's a ton of questions out there. We've been through this process for a long time, and, you know, want to make sure there's a lot of opportunity to understand the issues as the process goes forward.
I have a question.
Not really a question, but a statement.
Go ahead.
A statement is it, we all know what's happened in the past with the Forest Service and our land. You mentioned there was eight mills here before. Now it seems like our land, we don't have any access to hardly any of it at all. There's no production coming out of the land. You guys are the commissioners of Idaho County, and I believe that you guys should start standing up and just say no to the federal government because they're encroaching on our whole country. Now, the Constitution is the supreme law of the United States of America.
Yeah.
You guys have taken an oath to uphold that law. Article 1, Section 8 of the United States Constitution says that the federal government shall not own 10 miles square in any state.
That's right.
Okay? Now, we, since you're under oath to the Constitution, then we need to start practicing the Constitution and holding the federal government responsible for their, they operate under the Constitution just as well as you guys. So you guys are under oath to the Constitution, and we should start standing up. And that's why all these people are here today, because we all want to stand up. We don't want to just go, "Oh, it was a good meeting." We've already seen what's been done. We've already seen how much Mr. Grant stood up for our rivers, for our forest, for use of our trails, for our mills. We have production here in Idaho County. And we've got three commissioners here that are supposed to be in charge of what goes on in Idaho County and with our land. And if you guys would stand up there with some sort of spine, then we would not have to worry, and we would have to come to these kinds of meetings worried about what else is going to happen to our land.
Thank you.
We shouldn't even be here right now. I mean, with all due respect to the other gentleman, this meeting should be between you guys and us, not them.
Yeah, absolutely. They are here, Western Pacific, you have Western Pacific here downstairs. So from my understanding, Western Pacific was invited here because the people who have grazing leases, this is in the initial stages, and the current owner of the land, who might end up being the owner of this exchanged land, they wanted to talk with the ranchers relative to grazing rights, and that's why Western Pacific is here. Other than that, this is a meeting between us. You could just as well be downstairs.
Did I hear you right, sir? You contacted the Forest Service and offered them this Idaho County land?
What we said, and the letter is on, do you have a copy of the letter?
Yeah, I do.
What we said was, they had seven alternatives, all of them, in our opinion, were bad for Idaho County. From bad to worse.
Why didn't you comment on that last time? There's already been a comment period.
No, we did. That was the comment period. And our official comment, we had to make a comment by a certain date, and we did. And our official comment was, "No action, period." And in that, we said, "You don't have any alternatives that we could work with, or you have to maintain our production base."
We're in the middle of another comment period on this.
Are we?
Yes.
If I might just jump in. Last March, this exchange proposal started with my predecessor as commissioner, the chairman of the commission, started with another previous forest suit. It started numerous years back, and we've been saying, "No, no, no." Because of the tax revenue, because of the jobs that this, that those 40,000 acres represent to this county. From that time...
Which 40,000 are you talking about?
Yeah. Any 40,000.
Which 40,000 are you talking about?
We've done, we've done, we paid a U of I economist, okay, to do the study. So it's really focused on upper Locksaw land. If you come out here, these acres are worth even more, in my opinion, to Idaho County because of the access to the mills. So the train is coming down the track. The exchange, more than likely, was going to happen. We cannot let, either by purchase or exchange, this county to lose over one-fifth of our private timberlands in this county.
So are you saying, are you saying that they can take the 40,000 and exchange it with land in another county?
Instantaneously, yes.
Okay, so that means I can take my property and exchange it with some other county, and you can lose a tax revenue from that too?
No, because you have to exchange it to a private. And so...
Well, why don't you hold that? Why don't you hold that same rule over them?
Well, and that's been, that's been our pitch.
A personal business.
That has been our pitch, is to say no. But again, everybody thinks, as soon as you get elected to something, you're going to change the world. This is the federal government. We can't straighten out Washington DC for anything. Now we're up against this issue where what is going to happen? How do we make this the best opportunity for Idaho County for, to keep our tax base whole and provide jobs? And that's where we came up with this map and this alternative.
They can't make that exchange. They cannot make that exchange. The sheriff can stop that from happening, yes.
We actually told them that. And we said, "You make the exchange, we're going to file an injunction against you." And they said...
How can they exchange, how can they exchange lands they don't have deed to, they don't have ownership of?
Because you've got people with no backbone.
You have to ask the foresters.
And why are you running, why are you running a quiet title action? You're running a quiet title action on this property right now, and you're not admitting to that.
He's running his lips, like always.
This is a meeting to give you guys information.
We're giving you some too.
And this is not how it's changed.
We're not exchanging private or public land for private. We're not doing...
Skip, we're not here to dig, I'm not here to dig on you, but I think, I think you can do something about it. And there's a, it's easy to say that we're going to stop the federal government. But it hasn't been done yet.
You're saying no, but you're still saying yeah.
You gave them a...
Why do they want to exchange a specific land?
Does anybody else say no to it? Yes, sir.
Here's that new three gentlemen on show. I would like to have an up and down vote right now to establish where you are, to be absolutely certain, followed by a hand raised again, right here and now.
So the people...
Just so the press can report this accurately.
What, a vote?
Vote your conscience, is what he's saying.
I would like to know whether or not these three commissioners are up and down, yes or no, on this. Obviously, you are for this.
Yes.
I would like it known right now, James, Skip, and Jimmy.
I'm for no action. All right.
You're for no action?
Right.
Okay, I want to vote on, you're the initiator here. Are you for this program?
Yes.
Okay, let's have an up and down vote right now with the people present, so we can report accurately to the press what occurred in this room.
Okay.
All right.
Please ask for a vote on the hand raised.
On what, whether they...
Whether or not they approve of this Locksaw land exchange.
Whether they want this federal land to become private?
Just for popping, don't confuse this, yes or no, of the Locksaw land exchange.
Yes or no?
No.
No. Raise a hand, yes.
No.
No.
Raise a hand.
Raise your hands, please.
No, 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 no.
Raise your hands if you're for it.
Why do they want this specific land? There's a reason for an exchange.
Where they came up with, and my map's downstairs, is when we went forward to give them an alternative and said, "We want acre for acre exchange in Idaho County." We threw out a map that the Forest Service said would not work because of either it was tribal cultural issues, it was fish corridors, or it was this, that, or the other, land management that's going on. So I went over and sat down with a whole mess of folks at the Forest Service and came up with these chunks that were out of fish corridors, out of wildlife habitat areas that were of concern, out of tribal...
So you vote yes, and your constituency is standing here saying no. Who do you represent?
Not you.
Who do you represent?
The federal government.
I can have the sheriff's office come up here.
Good, get him up here. Have a look.
I want this to be an informative meeting.
Were you threatening somebody?
Because we don't agree with you?
Were you just threatening somebody?
Mighty Skip.
There's a reason you picked this particular acre.
We'd have to go 100 and some miles just to get to that damn land.
Good idea, good idea.
But if we go up there, we've got to go 100 miles. That's bullshit.
All the land you're talking about should have been ceded to the state at the time of statehood.
I said, "This is so important, that land, why don't you lobby with the Forest Service to issue four of them, to be logged on that, so that we get the same income base out of it and the same employment out of it, and we still own the land?"
We're, yes, that's another issue that we're working on right now.
That's the one you should be pushing because you're working for the people.
As of Monday and Tuesday, I was in Moscow working on just that, a community forest trust. I want to jerk some of the control out from the Forest Service process and hand it to the state to manage. There are five counties that have stepped up to talk about doing a pilot project to do just as you're talking about. And ushering it through. I was with Congressman Labrador on Monday. He's got the amendment drafted to stick on a bill to allow just that. This is, the real fight is, this is just one aspect. Right now, this realm...
Great idea, but if we give our ground away before we get that done, then what the hell are we going to work on that?
That's right.
Give it away. What I'm saying is, give it away. What I'm trying to say is, right in the heart of what you want to, these gentlemen don't, they don't want that. They're not going to want either. But what I'm saying is, right now, and I said to Skip, so I go through the day, just exactly what that gentleman talked about. Let's pressure the Forest Service, and I know it's an uphill battle. Hell, we've been fighting these people forever too. But let's push for that, and let's get our, let's get our timber managed the way we're supposed to, and then we'll have that income and that... supposed to and then we'll have that income and that...
Come on, that's right.
Those revenues for our school, I went to school in Grangeville. And I can tell you right now, we had the richest district in the state. School district two forty-one was the richest school district in the state of Idaho, it had a surplus, never asked for anything. Let's get that back. And let's don't, let's don't, let's don't give our ground or trade our, right, our backyard, which is the hard, this fish creek area, anybody that knows that loves it.
So let, let me get this straight. Nobody here wants to have any of our four point five million acres of federally controlled ground to be in private hands?
Yeah, it should, it should be in our state hands. That's who it belonged to. At the time, the state was incorporated, it was supposed to be ceded.